In Texas and remain standing for a moment of silence, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas side, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God one and indivisible.
May be seated. Our next item is public comment. In accordance with the Attorney General's office opinion, any public comment that is made that is not on the published final agenda will only be heard by city council, no formal action decision. Deliberation or comment will be made by the city council. Each person providing public comment will be limited to three minutes. And Trish, I believe you got. I have two individuals wishing to speak. Mr. Wolf has indicated he's going to hold until the item comes up on the agenda. Our other speaker is Mr. Forgive me, sir. Delfasina?
Just call me Wayne.
Wayne, come on up.
Can I hear this?
Yes.
I've never been to a Flugerville City Council meeting. Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Wayne Delfasino. I run an investigative media company in Houston called Delfasino Media. And no offense to the City Attorney of Flugerville, but the law on open meetings and public comment say that you can't deliberate. It doesn't say you can't make comments or ask questions to speakers. Just, I'm not a lawyer, but I get sued a lot and I know a lot about the Open Meetings Act. So just for the record, you can ask me questions after I finish. I invite you to ask me questions. We've been investigating ambulance companies, excuse me, around the state for about a year. I've investigated public corruption in government for about forty something years, so I have a little bit of expertise. It is an investigation that began in Port Arthur and Fort Worth where Acadian Ambulance was falsifying response time records. Early on, I received complaints about Allegiance Ambulance, but we were busy in Fort Worth and Port Arthur. And a few weeks ago, I hope all of you got to see it, we did a video detailing some early findings of an investigation into Allegiance Ambulance, which is violating its response time virtually every month, its promises under its contract. Since we did that report, we noticed in the contract that there's supposed to be a report every month. When you don't, if you call for help, Mayor, and they're supposed to be there in eight minutes, and instead they get there in thirty minutes, that monthly report is supposed to say, here's why we didn't get to Councilman Rogers' house for thirty minutes, so that everyone knows what you messed up and why. That report has never been turned in since that new contract has been, even wasn't even turned in before. When we asked the city about it, they said, we waived that requirement in the contract. Now, I've looked back at your meetings and I don't remember a council meeting where the council voted to waive a requirement in a contract you just did months ago. So I believe, in my humble opinion, and we'll be doing a follow-up video soon, and I've also now been dragged into your fire department fight against my will, but I'm in it now, but I believe the city should ask for an immediate investigation by your city staff into not only that, why you've waived requirements in your contract, but in looking at the raw data, you will see that Allegiance does the same thing that Acadian does. There are response times in your raw data, response times of three seconds, eight seconds. Now, maybe if the ambulance is sitting in front of your house when you have a heart attack, God forbid, it gets there in eight seconds, but I think all of us are kind of smart enough to know that that's probably not happening, okay? Yet if you look at your raw data, there are multiple responses that are within seconds. What does that do? Not only is that bad data, but it also skews the response time records, right? You can't see their average is eight minutes and then throw in a bunch of five-second response times. So I would urge, and I'd be more than happy for you to follow up with me if you don't want to comment now, and more happy for you to tell me that you're going to conduct an investigation into whether or not. Because I think the data suggests they might be. Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Thank you very much.
Have a great night.
Appreciate it.
Sure.
Our next item is a mayor's proclamation. This proclamation is related to gun safety awareness. Unsecured guns pose clear safety risks, particularly to children. When the guns are not stored safely or secured, the risk of death or injury significantly increases. Four point six million minors in the U.S. live in homes with at least one loaded unlocked firearm. In the United States, three hundred and fifty children a year get access to a loaded from accidentally shoot themselves or someone else. When children unintentionally shoot another person, the victim is most often a sibling or a friend. Educating and resourcing communities to practice safe gun handling and storage is an actionable, meaningful way to create safer homes and neighborhoods across our city, state, and country. Therefore, I proclaim August 2024 as Gun Safety Awareness Month in the city of Flugerville. This evening, we have Kim Caldwell and Devon Spencer from Lock Arms for Life that are here to receive this presentation.
Hi, thank you all so much. Thank you, City Council of Flugerville. Thank you, Mayor. We have been doing this now for two years, declaring August as Gun Safety Awareness Month in cities here in Texas. We'll be back trying to do this at the legislature because the reality is guns are now the number one injury leading to death for children one to nineteen in our country. And we can make our homes and our communities safer right now, right now. We don't need anyone's permission. We don't need any policy changes. We can make homes safer now by safely storing firearms. And whether you have guns or don't, right, we are living in a world where guns outnumber people and we owe it to the people who might come across those guns to make sure that they're safely stored. So again, thank you all so much for helping us raise awareness about the opportunity to make our homes and our communities safer now. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, our next item is reading of the consent agenda. Council, any items you wish to pull?
I've got one. Five O as an Oscar.
Five O?
Yes, sir.
Did I pull five in? Okay, so five N and five O.
Oh, you pulled in? Okay.
Anybody else?
I think I saw an eighth.
Okay.
Okay, items five N and five O have been pulled from the consent agenda. Item five A is approving an ordinance on third reading with a caption reading, an ordinance of the city of Flugerville, Texas, amending ordinance number twelve zero three dash fifteen dash zero two dash two four of the city of Flugerville, Texas as amended by changing the zoning designation of approximately thirty-two point six one nine seven acres of land out of the CS Paris survey number two, abstract number six twenty-one, and the Sephram Island survey. Number one, abstract two sixty-five, both in Travis County, Texas, from planned unit development, general business one, and agriculture conservation to planned unit development district to be known as the downtown east planned unit development, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing percebability, and providing an effective date. As a reminder, items five N and five O have been pulled. All remaining items may be acted upon in a single motion.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and second to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, motion carried. Our next item is item six, boards and commissions. Six A is conduct a presentation or an introduction to take action to appoint, make appointments to the Equity Commission. And this evening, we have one applicant, Clarissa Fuslay, Fusler. I'm sure I pronounced that wrong. Clarissa, you want to come forward, please?
Yes.
So just tell us why you want to be on the Equity Commission, please.
Sure. So I have been a resident of Flugerville for the better part of maybe about nine years. I am, has started my diversity, equity, inclusion journey about six years ago in the tech industry. And that spawned from being an individual where people felt comfortable telling me what would, you know, what was something was unfair, how there would be opportunities for us to make things more balanced, more inclusive in the environment that you're in. And through those years, I've broadened my understanding of, you know, what equity actually is in different areas of our lives, whether it's work, whether it's personal, whether it's running your own business. I am a small business owner as well, and being a part of Flugerville community, I have lots of thoughts and lots of ideas where we can make things in the Flugerville community more inclusive of all community members here in Flugerville. And I also believe that these cannot be created in a vacuum. In order for you to make equitable change, you have to bring everybody along for the change. And in doing so, it's important to have a commission, a group of people, that is reflective of your community that you're serving, to be able to give you those perspectives that you could be missing. And I want to be a part of that. So I'm here.
Thank you. That was great. Appreciate it. Council, any questions?
So Clarissa, you said that you had involvement in the tech industry. How in particular?
So yeah, I have been a program manager in most of the homegrown startups in Austin from Bizarre Voice to CS Disco as an operations program manager. So I keep things running. They bring me in when I'm here to solve problems.
So are you a contractor to the various ones? Did you come in and you work and operate or are you a staff?
No, this is, this has been a full-time job doing something else. And I think that's the piece of understanding diversity, equity, inclusion that sometimes people miss is that you do not have to be an expert in diversity, equity, inclusion in order to actually do this work. I fell into it because I had, you know, the self-awareness and the empathy of other people that I wanted to be able to use my voice and the influence that I have in my sphere to make change for other people and those who need to be heard. So as being in a operation setting where you're responsible for keeping things running, I had the voice to be able to advocate for others and didn't even know that DEI was a word. A lot of us was doing this work before you even know that that was a cool thing to do, right? And so I fell into this work, which is a lot of people do. They fall into it because they care about it. They care about the next person. And so I do my work these days to work with other organizations now that I'm no longer doing full-time is to help them see those same kind of opportunities that everyone needs to be responsible for bringing people in and being able to exact change. You don't necessarily have to be a person who is an expert at it. You just have to care.
So help me understand, what's your vision of what you would be doing on this commission?
Yeah, so I think one of the first things I would like to see is what data are we pulling in to find out if there are any gaps in equity and there are any problems? Because one thing that I do caution any organization to do is trying to throw something at the wall to see what sticks. You have to make data-driven solutions and you have to have the data that speaks to you to find out that there is a gap somewhere.
What data would you look at in particular? Would you, you'd want to see?
It really just depends. I think what, what you want to start as, what you want to start strategically is what is your population? And if we're looking at different areas between buckets of education, housing, justice, all those buckets, right? They're so huge. So I would caution too, like, you need to first find out, why are we doing this? So I think my question is, back to the council, is what was the driving need of wanting to have the Equity Commission in the first place?
So I would say this to you is that one of the things, and the reason why I'm asking is that one of the things that I didn't hear was veteran status. And that's something that drove specifically part of the conversation we had here, which you ultimately ended up getting an award last year because we have ten percent of our population is the FTEs, or ten percent of FTEs are veterans. And I've been flummoxed, is a nice way for me to put it, regarding the work of the Equity Commission at times, because our vision is for, just like you said, for various different viewpoints and ideas and voices to be uplifted and heard regarding, and therefore their viewpoints are reflected in our policies, procedures, or aspects that we have, even our own budgets. And when you're talking about data and the other points, I'm not looking at reinventing what's happening here, but I am looking at trying to get more of a focus aspect with there as well. I mean, so in your instance, do you have any qualms going out in the community and meeting with people and hearing what people have to say? Because this, this committee's different from our other committees, is that we want this committee to be in the community, getting back information, feedback and understanding on issues or concerns that we may not hear, that we'd like to hear. I think that one of the things that we would have heard way beforehand, for example, would have been regarding how our water and wastewater rates were affecting our senior population. Now, we didn't hear that, and I expected to hear that from the Equity Commission, because I expect the Equity Commission to be on the community hearing from that. Ultimately, you've seen what staff's done, an excellent job in the council to go ahead and see how we ameliorate that, the implementation of the necessary focuses for those things. But we are looking at an extended arm, and it's been quite disconcerting to not see that happen. And, and so I'm excited about you, want you to be on this commission, but I also want to better reiterate like what we're asking for, what looking for here from there. We're literally the most diverse city in central Texas, quite literally. And it's been very frustrating to see that this commission has not ramped up to where I would hope to, I mean, how, it's been three years? Yeah. When, because the mayor, former mayor, pro-ten Omar Pena and myself, we came up with this whole idea even before the murder of George Floyd. And it's, it's, it's frustrating. So that's why I wanted to hear when you talked about data, I'm like, okay, are we looking at starting from ground zero again? What are we looking at? How are we going to implement?
Nope, nope. I definitely tell people and like folks that I work with is, one, you need to do an audit of the data that you already have. There's no sense in going back to, you know, reinvent the wheel, as you say. The next thing is you have to start looking at what you want your roadmap to look like. You know, if the Equity Commission does not have a roadmap, if the council has not worked together for a roadmap of like what results you want to see, it's going to fail because there's no throughput of what they're aiming at to succeed. And so the first thing you need to do is create, you know, your strategy and what your end result's what to look like. Like, in the next year, what would you like to see different in Flugerville, in different areas of our community? And then we want to put in, okay, what kind of measurable results would that look like? How do we measure that? And then we go and we go and get the data to be able to confirm that this is the area that we want to go and this is the kind of solutions that we want to propose. You know, you can't throw things at the wall to see what sticks because this is people. And I would actually have been concerned if you didn't mention that you wanted the Equity Commission team to actually speak to the people, because that's, that's where we get our data from, more than just the anecdotal data, because that's still important too, but just knowing who's saying what and why and how it affects them. That's data that you still need to have in the Equity Commission for you to be able to propose meaningful solutions, not just check-the-box solutions.
You good?
You mentioned you lived in Flugerville for nine years. I've lived in Flugerville for twenty years, but I've lived in a number of different cities, all of them more segregated than Flugerville. Austin, Fort Worth, Houston, Los Angeles, every single one of those cities is much more segregated than, than, than Flugerville. I would say all of those cities have substantial levels of histories of racial antagonism that Flugerville lacks. You asked the question, why are we doing this? What do you think the answer to that question is?
You know, if I was not in the business of DEI, I would probably say that it's because you want, you want a better community. You want a more effective community. There's also, you know, I will be honest, and this is not anything to do with you and the council, but we all know also that there's a lot of entities and organizations who want to do it because everyone else is doing it and they want to seem cool. They want to be on trend, right? But I would like to think the place where I pay my taxes and I live and work every day is because we want to make a more inclusive community where everyone can thrive, not just survive, and people can actually be part of the community itself, not just, because that's the thing I want to make sure that people understand, like, we can be a very diverse community. If the people who are part of that diverse community do not have a voice, if they don't have agency, if they don't have power, then what is it, right? Diversity is the end goal. Making things fair. Equity, that's the first goal. Inclusive, the next goal. The end result is having true diversity, and that means that everyone has some say. They have a stake in it.
All right, you, you mentioned some, you used some words just now that you mentioned earlier, and I'd like to drill down on that a little bit. You could tell me what you mean by, by these words, equity?
Yeah.
What does that mean to you?
So equity means, you know, like, I know a lot of people get kind of wrapped around that word a lot because it's been highly politicized, but in essence, equity means fairness. It's the difference of equality. Equal means, like, these two chairs, two individuals, I get that chair, another person gets that chair. I'm a big woman. I'm gonna tell you right now, those chairs suck. I would really like a bigger chair. A more equitable thing would be giving me a chair with no arms, so I can have a seat and two individuals are still able to sit, still able to enjoy the council meeting, but I'm not squished in. So that's the difference between equality and equity. Equality is what we kind of grew up believing is that everyone gets everything the same as is equal. It doesn't take into account that everybody has different needs. Everybody is different. We have different perspectives, different backgrounds, different upbringings. And if we don't understand that there are disparities that exist realistically in our world, based on those differences, then equality is not going to fit it. Equity fits because it's giving exactly what that person needs to get ahead. That's equity for me.
To each according to their needs.
Yes.
Meeting people where they are.
Exactly.
You know, I want to say, you know, thank you for the honesty in your answers. It's very refreshing to hear that. It's not regurgitated, it's not rehearsed. It's just true and honest and down-to-earth, and I love that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
There was another word you've used and maybe not, several times.
Diversity.
In, in, in combination with that, fair. What does that mean to you?
Fair. I would say a good idea, understanding of fair is an individual or group of individuals know that how they are being treated, how they're being viewed, is they're being seen as a human being first. And fairness, even though it's highly philosophical and, you know, we can wax poetic on this all day about the idea of fairness, but I think when it comes down to in community, right? Fairness is realizing that when you have those different disparities and you're ignoring them, there's no way that you can make something fair for an individual. If they are already struggling, if I'm already struggling to sit in that seat and I can't focus, I can't pay attention to the meeting, then how is that fair for me to be able to be here and present with you, just like the other individual who was able to sit there and be able to be attentive, to pick up all the information and participate in this council meeting, just like you? So.
One of the other phrases you used early on is that you thought that the commission should be, and correct me if I get this quote wrong, reflective of the people. Is that right? Did I get that right? What does that mean to you?
I want to be able to look at the Equity Commission just like I look at this council. You have small business owners, you have people of all different genders, different backgrounds, just like Flugerville. This is Flugerville, right? That's what I want to see. Because we want to stay away from a very narrow look of what Flugerville is going to look like. And in order to do that, you have to have something, everything you bring in, if it's by the people, nothing about them without them, basically. That's how I say it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
I think we're good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, we can change the motion?
Absolutely.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion and second to approve Clarissa to the Equity Commission.
We got a second, third, fourth, fifth.
And motion carried. Clarissa, thank you and welcome to the Equity Commission.
You're very welcome.
Our next item is introductions and take action to make appointments to the Deutschenfest Committee. We have applicant Lenise Haney. I think Tara Cohen is not present, has applied, but will be in attendance at a following meeting. Counsel, do you have any questions for, for Lenise? Is she here? Okay, there we go. You want to come forward? I'm sorry, did I pronounce that correctly?
No, you pronounce it Nietzsche.
I did?
Yeah, that's how you're supposed to pronounce it.
Oh, okay.
It's a trick.
All right.
There you are.
How do you pronounce my name?
De Ho.
How do you pronounce my name?
Cesar. Cesar Ruiz.
There you go. You got one vote. I'm just kidding.
I've practiced.
How many Deutschenfest festivals have you been to?
One.
One?
Well, here in Flugerville, but I grew up in Germany, so I've been to lots of Deutsche festivals in Deutschland.
So you have a little of that German.
You know, that, that is a very impressive answer. Good point. One in Flugerville, but.
Can't argue with that one.
Sprachen Sie viel Deutsch?
Ja, ich kann Deutsch sprechen, aber ich hatte so lange keine Deutsch sprechen, ich hatte viel Vergessen. And I probably have an American accent now.
Perfect. Ich habe eine Berliner-Axente, aber ich habe zwei Jahre in Baden. Es ist nicht so viel.
No, it's not slashed. It's, it's okay. It's not too bad.
Danke.
If I start speaking German too much, though, then my English will switch, you know, turn my accent back. turn my accent back.
So I think Deutschenfest has been divided into different groups now, right? And each group is in charge of something, correct me if I'm wrong? Is that how it's been? Or like, one group is in charge of doing a particular thing, or did we change that?
I would say.
I guess my question would be, what do you hope to do on Deutschenfest?
You know, this is my first time, and you have to start somewhere, so I want to be useful where I am most needed.
Okay.
Sure. Marijuana intended.
Entertained.
Absolutely. Motion to approve.
Have a motion.
Second.
Second. Are we, we're just approving the one candidate or two?
Yes.
Okay.
Das ist richtig.
All right.
Dankeschön.
Bitte.
We can practice if you want to practice more.
Ich spreche Textdeutsch.
Motion carried. Welcome to the Deutschenfest Committee. And we'll hear from Tara Cohen, I guess, on the 27th. Item number seven is our first supplemental agenda, discuss and consider action to approve a resolution ordering a general election for the November 5th, 2024, for the election of Council Place Three and Council Place Five.
Motion approved, item as presented.
Second. A motion and a second. And motion carried. All right, our next item is one B. Discuss and consider action to approve a resolution ordering a special election for November 5th, 2024, authorizing the creation of a Flugerville Municipal Development District and the imposition of a sales and use tax at the rate of one, one half of the, one percent of the purpose of financing development projects beneficial to the district. And for this item, we are going to retire into executive session, counsel.
Attorney.
There we go. We're in executive session.
Okay, we are back from executive session. No action was taken and actually we are planning to move on to the next item. No action would be taken on this item. I have two individuals that are wishing to speak. Since we're not taking action on this, would you still like to speak?
Uh, I don't want to take up a lot of y'all's time. If you guys aren't taking action.
Right. Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, so you guys are the professionals.
Uh, do you want to hear what I got to say or... I mean, that's a bad question.
If we're... yeah.
I'm sorry. That puts you in a bad situation.
We are taking no action here. I would...
Well, then I would like to say thank you guys so much. Public safety is super important to me and I know it is to all you guys and all of our citizens. So, I really appreciate what you guys do for the community and thank you for standing behind your first responders and all of us who depend on them. So, thank you. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Del Sofino, is he still here? Wayne? Nope?
No.
Okay. Moving on to item eight, regular agenda presentation regarding the Fuggerbell Community Development Corporation FY twenty-four Q three financial report.
All right. Welcome. Mommy, I'm welcome. Mayor, Council, sorry. Tracy Waldron, Finance Director, I'm here to present PCDC's fiscal twenty-four quarter three financial report. Uh, just some highlights of the report. Total revenue is ninety-four percent of budget. Sales tax is the largest portion of that revenue and it's trending seventy-three percent of budget. Expenditures are at forty-five percent of budget. Um, just to note, development incentives and debt payments are in the fourth quarter, so that's a big portion of the expenditures. Can I answer any questions you might have?
Um, so, uh, given that we're at ninety-four percent of budget, I presume at this point we've gotten all of our property tax money a long time ago.
They just have sales tax.
Sales tax. Sales tax only.
For PCDC.
I'm sorry. Uh... Oh, this... I'm sorry. I was focusing on the other budget.
Right.
My mistake.
Got you.
Never mind, I said it.
Yes. Yes, we're trending to mid-budget and sales tax.
You're thinking NMD.
Okay.
Looks good.
Is that it?
I've got the next item, so I'll stay up here.
Well, right.
That's it?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, great.
Awesome.
I love short. Thank you very much, Trista. Appreciate it. Uh, our next item is eight B, discuss and consider action to approve a resolution to set a proposed maximum twenty-twenty-four property tax rate supporting the FY twenty-five budget and schedule the date for the public hearing. Are you still up there?
I'm still up here. All right, so, um, setting this maximum tax rate is required by the tax code. Um, we can adopt something lower when we come back for adoption, but we can adopt something higher. So this is the maximum tax rate. The proposed tax rate, um, that we're proposing is the fifty-four twenty-eight. Um, at this proposed tax rate, the average taxable homestead could see an increase of eleven ninety-six per month.
Oh, I'm sorry?
Eleven dollars and ninety-six cents per month on the average homestead.
Okay.
So, a hundred and forty dollars a year.
Yes.
Less than mine's.
Hundred and forty-three.
And when was the last time our proposed tax rate was this high?
Um, it's...
Two thousand seventeen?
I don't have that in front of me, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, we saw the chart earlier. I don't remember what year that was. Madam City Manager, do you...
I'm working on that.
There's a chart.
Yeah, there's a chart in the proposed...
We got the chart.
It's also in your budget.
There it is. Excellent. All right, there we go.
Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you.
So we're... Two thou... This gets us back where we were in two thousand eighteen.
Yeah.
I guess we were... We were pretty much the same place from... No. Uh, sixteen through eighteen. Okay, but this is a substantially lower tax rate than we had any time before two thousand fourteen. Is that right? Correct. Am I reading that right?
Yes.
Right. Okay. All right. And you can... Now, this is average annual homestead taxes paid, not tax rate.
The line is the rate.
The orange line.
The orange line is the rate. Okay. The blue line is the... Okay. I'm sorry. I'm feeling dyslexic right now. I don't know. I'm not sure what's going on there. Okay. All right, thank you. And just for the record, uh, that rate started coming down in, uh, oh six when I got elected to office, so...
I was... I was... I'm not gonna lie to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I was waiting for you to say... What he said is, "You're welcome," Fuggerbell. That's what he said.
I love that. That's funny.
All right.
We could point to twenty seventeen when we were elected.
That's true. That's when... That's when the real stuff happened, right?
Right. Yeah.
So the staff recommendation is to approve the proposed tax rate as, uh, set before you at fifty-four twenty-eight to support the fiscal twenty-five budget and to set a public hearing, uh, for September twenty-fourth.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the proposed tax rate of point five four two eight to support the, um, fiscal year twenty-five budget and set a public hearing on September the twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four.
Second.
Have a motion and second.
Thank you.
Having discussion, huh?
No. Does anybody want discussion? Okay, motion carried.
And that... And that just shows what the maximum can be and then we can have the discussion with that. What I'd ask for staff is that, um, the known, um, revenue rate, show us an example of things that we would not be able to do because of that.
Without, right.
Yeah. And as you said regarding our... Most people's... Most people's rates are going, um, funds are going down or their rates are going down anyway because of appraisal values that have happened with that too as well. So even... Even at that, point zero five four. And that's good to know too, is important. But just show us... It'd be good to show that juxtaposition between what we could have and what we couldn't.
Okay.
What can do in service?
Yeah.
All right. Item eight C, discuss and consider action regarding update on the Texas Municipal League Policy Summit and a resolution for TML legislative priorities.
So as you know, I'm one of the Sado masochists that TML comes to every two years when it comes to their legislative policy summit. Um, and we just wrapped up today. It was a very interesting and lighting last couple of days. Um, last time we had our meeting, it was too late to submit something to the policy summit, but it's not going to be too late to submit something to our general meeting in October. So what I'd like for us to do instead of, um, doing here today is to wait for our update on Monday, the nineteenth. Am I correct on that date?
Yes, sir.
Uh, on the nineteenth and have on our calendar there for discuss and consider action on that instead of here after we get our update on from our focused advocacy folks, who were there at TML summit, answering classes for other people too as well.
Okay. All right. Schedule for the nineteenth?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Moving on to, um, a lengthy executive session.
Oh, no way. We're done today.
Um, we still have items we pulled, we have to go back to. Um, uh, let me just go down the list. Eight D, executive discussion of personnel matters regarding evaluation of work hours, duties and compensation of the municipal judge pursuant to chapter five five one dot zero seven four of the Texas Government Code. Eight E, executive session and discussion of personnel matters pursuant to chapter five five one dot zero seven four of the Texas Government Code regarding appointment and duties of the associate municipal judge. Eight F, deliberation regarding real property pursuant to chapter five five one dot zero seven two of the Texas Government Code regarding the purchase, exchange, lease and/or value of real property. Eight G, deliberation regarding real property pursuant to chapter five five one dot zero seven two of the Texas Government Code regarding the purchase, exchange, lease and/or value of real property related to real estate proposal for downtown east. Eight H, executive session consultation with legal counsel pursuant to section five five one dot zero so on Texas Government Code for discussion regarding EBS Metals Incorporated demand letter. And we've already covered, um, uh, eight I in executive session.
Mayor, is it possible for us to go cover the, um, pulled items first so we can let the people go?
Sure. I... I think that's a great idea.
Okay.
Trista? I think it was five N and five O.
Item five N...
Every time you say five O, I think of Hawaii.
Is approving a rate stabilization agreement with Windermere Utility Company and authorizing the city manager to execute the same.
I'm sorry, repeat that again?
Five N is approving a rate stabilization agreement with Windermere Utility Company and authorizing the city manager to execute the same.
That's the one you pulled, right, John?
Is there a specific question?
Yeah, I pulled that one.
Oh.
Oh, Brandon, would you like...
So, yeah. Yeah, come on.
Sure.
So I just wanted clarification, Windermere Utility versus Southwest Water. Are we talking about one and the same or is that a different situation?
Yes, sir. The one and the same. So it is... Windermere Utility Company is the name of the water system. Uh, it is owned and operated by Texas Water Utilities, uh, that used to be Southwest Water Company.
Southwest, okay.
So it's analogous to having another name for Beelzebub to be Lucifer. Okay. That's fine.
Beetlejuice, Beetlejuice. And the rate stabilization basically does what? I mean, is...
Yes, sir. So any... Any private entity, uh, that operates within the city limit... Any city limits within the state of Texas is required to come forward to the city... City that they're work within and it stabilizes their rates based upon the CPI for that year and they can only go up based upon the CPI for that year.
Okay, gotcha.
Unless they have some extenuating circumstances that they had to enumerate to the city.
Thank you.
Or is anyone from that entity here today?
Uh, they had a scheduling conflict which we... And if we wanted to speak with our folks with Texas Water Utilities, we can delay it till the twenty-seventh.
I would absolutely love to wait to speak to them.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah. Absolutely can do that.
Mr. McDonald, well, okay. I move... Motion to approve five N. Second. Motion carried. Mr. McDonald.
If I...
Go ahead.
Item five O is approving a wholesale water supply contract with Windermere Utility Company and authorizing the city manager to execute the same.
Uh, I... I was just going through this and I just wanted to, um, give some credit to staff for negotiating a great new rate. Um, this is going to bring some additional revenue, uh, to the city and, uh, I just wanted to say thank you for your... Your good work. Thank you.
Motion to approve? Second. Motion and second. Motion carried. All right. Now we're in executive session. All right, now we're in executive session.
Done now. Got to sit through the entire meeting. It's a week.
I've got a sticker for you.
Oh yeah? I don't have, I didn't bring it with me. I thought I had it with me.
It is, um, you remember the, the...
Hey Emily.
First Star Wars movie?
Mm-hmm.
It's like the Cheers version of...
I can't read that.
The Bar scene.
Nice, nice.
And I thought that would...
Seven hundred and three thousand.
We'll find a spot for it.
I think it's too good for that.
Alright.
So we're back from executive session. Action was taken. We do have one action item on Ain't Gee, which is the purchase exchange lease in our value of real property related to the real estate proposal of downtown east. And this was a discussion negotiation between City of Plugerville and the First United Methodist Church whereby we have agreed to purchase 2.5 acres for $503,254 and an exchange of property in the arrangement.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second.
Our motion carried. That was all of the items.